I'll call to order the October 24, 2017 Planning Commission regular meeting. For the record, our chairman Greg Wassenger is absent. Cecil Pierce is here, Hal Hovey, Eric Mann, and Kevin Ostenson. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September 26 regular meeting.
Move we accept the minutes as presented?
Aye, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, unanimous. Second item on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing nobody in the audience and staff, we'll move to the third item, a public hearing, Planning Commission membership code amendment. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, members of the commission. This is a really simple little code amendment. I believe we've talked about this at your pre-meeting last month. From time to time when we have vacancies on the Planning Commission, the question comes up, do Planning Commission members need to be residents of the city? And the city's longstanding answer to that question has always been yes, but it was a policy, and so it was not found in our municipal code, also is not found in the bylaws which govern the Planning Commission. And so, as Planning Commission knows, from time to time, it is difficult to recruit members to the Planning Commission, not because the posts aren't coveted posts, but because there's only so many people that can volunteer, and when we maybe limit ourselves to just city residents, instead of including people who have a vested interest in the city, perhaps we limit our candidate pool. And so, I think maybe it was even Hal's suggestion that we look at memorializing and broadening who could be candidates for the Planning Commission. And so, we mirrored this language off of language that we have for the Salary Commission for the City Council. And so essentially, putting some new language in the section of the code that deals with the Planning Commission, that would then say that not less than four members should be residents of Oak Harbor, and the other three members could be either owners of businesses or owners of property within Oak Harbor. And we think from that perspective, they'll have a vested interest, and then, you know, be a valued part of the Planning Commission. So, in a nutshell, that's it. Your recommendation then this evening is that you recommend to the City Council that they adopt ordinance number 1815, amending OHMC Chapter 1804, entitled Planning Commission. I'd be happy to help you with your questions.
Do we have any questions?
I thought it was interesting going through the various positions in municipal code, and I know the wording came, you identified one location, I didn't see it there, but I saw it with, I think at the Marina. They also have the same thing.
Yes, we have a Marina Advisory Committee.
Yes.
And that has some different sorts of requirements, but also, I mean, with something like a Marina, it's very possible that you'll have a mortgage tenant who doesn't live in the city, who, you know, could be a good and active member of the Marina Advisory Committee and help give the council policy direction for that facility. So, that made sense, too. I neglected to mention this is advertised as a public hearing, so when you're ready, of course, it would be appropriate for you to open the hearing, take any comment, close the hearing, and then make your recommendation to the council.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. That's, you know, that's what I saw from reviewing the municipal code. It's always nice to go back and reference, okay, what are the other people doing? What are the other departments or programs doing? And I think it's important, but that's where I found it.
Any comments? I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend that the City Council adopts ordinance number 1815, amending Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 18.04, entitled Planning Commission.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion approved. Thank you. We'll go to the second item on the agenda, which is the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a public hearing.
Good evening, CAC Mac Senior Planner, presenting the 2017 Annual Amendments. I have a short, really short presentation. Go through it real quick. So, the annual amendments are a process. The state limits cities and counties to amend their comprehensive plan under the, the cities and counties that are planning under GMA, to only amend the comprehensive plan once a year. Makes sense, it's a long-range plan, it shouldn't be continually updated or amended, because you kind of want to set your horizon, eyes on the horizon with these plans, and let things be adopted and implemented. So, we go through an annual process every year. We have it codified in our code, in terms of the process we go through every year. And every year, the process starts in October. So, for the 2017 amendments, we started last year in October. We have a notice in the paper saying that we're going to amend the comprehensive plan, and we start taking input, our applications. Now, if you remember, before the 2016 amendments, our generalized, not generalized, our land use map and zoning map was in a one-to-one ratio, and so most of the applications we got for our annual amendments were land use changes, which would eventually lead to rezoning. And since with the 2016 update, we changed our land use map to a more generalized land use map, and you can do rezoning much faster under the zoning process, that, most of the applications kind of stopped coming in, because it doesn't have to go through a two-year process before somebody can make changes to their land use. So, but anyway, we still do open our comprehensive plan for sponsored amendments. There's a list of criteria on people wanting to make amendments to the comprehensive plan, what are the steps they have to follow, it's all codified. So, every October, we open up, we notify the public, we have applications. The deadline for all the applications is December 1. The idea is you collect all the amendments that are proposed, and you create a preliminary docket. And the preliminary docket is reviewed by the Planning Commission and the City Council. The City Council approves the docket, makes, calls it, let's call it a final docket, when they adopt it, usually done in March. And then, we work on the amendments from then on, most of the, most of the year till about September, August, September. When we start getting close to September, we have to follow some process. We've got to do the CEPA checklist, we've got to do, or notify Department of Commerce of our actions, and so we start to get into the kind of adoption process, which is what we are in right now. We've noted, we've notified the Department of Commerce that amendments that we're moving forward to. We've done a CEPA checklist, and it's out for review, and as we get closer to October and November, those processes will get terminated, or not finalized, so to speak, and we go into the hearing and the adoption process, which is where we are right now. So, the items that we had for our 2017 Annual Docket, which was adopted in April this year, we were about a week behind our normal time. We had an update to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and as the commission knows, we're working through those. We had, we also opened up the Economic Development Element. This is one of those things that the mayor had an ad hoc committee that wanted to talk about different approaches to economic development, and that task force came up with some ideas. Those ideas are not anything necessarily new, however, we wanted to keep the Economic Development Element open, so that we can talk about strategies on how to move some of those ideas forward. Of course, we have the urban growth area resizing. This was added to our docket, because the county had it on their docket, and they were going to discuss that. And this is most of the discussion that you may have had regarding the JPA expansion. Those are the things that are, that are still ongoing. We have the Capital Improvements Plan, 2018 to 2023, and this is going to move forward this year. We have a copy of the tables in your packet. And the Critical Area Maps for the Environment Element, this is an update to our Critical Area Maps. We've updated it with the GIS information and information that we've got from the state. So, those maps also included in your packet. So, what's moving forward is the Capital Improvements Plan and the Critical Area Maps. The Parks Recreation and Open Space Update is still under work. We're looking at, probably over the next two to three months, looking at the level of standards and the number crunching portion of it. We went through the goals and policies in that joint meeting, and there was some great feedback in terms of updating those. And then, eventually, we'll come up with a six-year implementation plan, that'll have a list of projects that we'd like to accomplish over the next six years. So, that's all going to come in the next three to four months. The environment, the Economic Development Element, we'll have to move that forward. We'll have to find a schedule in terms of how to discuss the, some of the ideas that the task force has come up with, and whether they'll result in any comp plan changes is unknown at this time, but that discussion will also happen over the next six months. And the urban growth area resizing, of course, as you are aware, that's a discussion that's still ongoing. There are some issues that the, we'll see how the county moves this topic through their docket process, and whether it gets onto their 2018 docket, and if it does so, we'll probably be coordinating with them to see, you know, how we can provide input and what changes we need to accommodate as part of that discussion. So, we'll keep that section of the plan updated, open as well. So, what's moving forward is just the Capital Improvements Plan and the Critical Area Maps for this year. We provided some of the information to you at the last meeting as a preview, just to give you a heads up on what's coming. The tables that have been provided in your packet are mostly finalized. We're still formatting the document. Those tables get into a document that's like in a booklet format. We're still formatting that information. So, at your next meeting, we'll have the booklet for you, but those, these are the tables, these are the main, the main content of the Capital Improvements Plan, those tables and the projects. So, we have that in front of you, and of course, the Critical Area Maps. So, what we usually do, there we go. The, we have a certain set of criteria by which we look at the amendments to see if they're appropriate for adoption in this particular year, and I provide an analysis of that, the criteria for the two amendments that's moving forward. So, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but if you have any questions about that, we can talk about it. And what we're asking the commission to do tonight is to open up the public hearing, take any comments, I see no public here, but, and we're asking the Planning Commission to continue it to the November meeting. What that does for us is it allows us to go through those notification process, and there are timelines, 60-day timelines, that we have to provide these agencies to provide feedback, and that kind of ends in the middle of November, so the next meeting is the appropriate time to kind of take action on it. But it doesn't hurt to have a hearing and talk about it. These meetings are televised and broadcast, and so anybody that's interested in this and catches a glimpse of this, and is interested, can come to the next meeting and still provide public testimony. So, we ask that you open the hearing and continue it, but I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and with the packet that's provided, and with the amendments that are moving forward.
Thank you, CAC. I'll open the public hearing and open for public comments, but seeing no public is here, I'll need a motion to continue this unless there's any discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The Economic Development Element, you said that they have not come out with any results from that yet, or how does that work? I mean, I understand it's all being slid over to the right anyway, but has anything come out of that?
We, we got an initial kind of, kind of summary of some ideas that they have come up with, and I listed it in page 19, just as, under my little paragraph. I think the ideas were about, you know, support for Main Street, increasing residential lots, building infrastructure along Goldie Street, upgrading the waterfront trail, and also developing a transportation improvement plan. Now, as I mentioned, these are not all new ideas, they are all kind of contained in the plan, but we just want to keep it open to explore, is there other things that we need to do to kind of move those things along? So, it doesn't result in any policy change, but we're just kind of keeping it open.
So, I guess my more specific question was, they haven't come up with anything that said, for example, we need to put $50,000 in the 2018 budget towards working on the waterfront trail extension. They haven't gotten down into any nitty-gritty type
No.
Details?
None of that.
And is that what's going to end up coming out of that?
Potentially. Potentially, we'll have to look at, you know, the action steps. Are there any action steps we can take advantage of in the next year or two, or is there anything that needs to be budgeted from a resource standpoint? So, those will have to be looked at a little more in detail to see. Primarily, I'm keeping it open, I'd like to keep it open, because would that result in any policy change, or would we have to look at some, some, you know, different way of doing things in order for something to happen? I don't want to close that element and then have some idea come up, and then have to wait next year, amendment-wise, policy-wise, to open it up again. So, that's why we wanted to keep it open.
And the Capital Improvements Plan portion, we have to do that every year anyway, right?
Not have to.
But we have been.
But we have done that every year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one quick question about the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area Maps. Curious where the data, or what jumps out at me, and I spend a lot of time out in the harbor, around with our safety team, and there's a very small area here that's designated for eelgrass, and over the last couple of years, that bed of eelgrass out in the harbor has expanded significantly, and it no longer fits that, that shape. Is that going to be of any significance?
It could be. We rely on the state to have their information. They do most of the scientific research. We don't have the resources to go out, do the survey, and determine whether conditions are appropriate, and so on. So, we rely on the state. We don't know the timing of how often they update the data. They probably do it on a project-by-project basis, so if there's a project out in Oak Harbor Bay, there's probably some studies that come along with the requirement of a permit, and then they'll kind of upgrade, you know, update the database based on that. So, I'm guessing the information here is based on whatever last project that we did, and so it's probably not necessarily reflecting today's data out there, but maybe when the last project was done. I think we have enough regulations in place for when projects happen over the water, that enough biological studies would have to be done to, to determine what are the impacts and what are the current conditions there that they'll have to deal with. This kind of gives us a way to inform project applicants, so even if the city's doing a project, that we have to consider these elements while we're doing the project. So, it's kind of a very general map to say, these are issues that we have to consider when we do projects. It doesn't relate necessarily, say, you should not do this or do that. It's just, an awareness document is basically what this is.
CAC, was, when they, as part of the waste treatment program of the treatment plant and the outfall piping that they replaced, wasn't that part, wasn't this part of that process?
The outfall project probably had its own biological evaluation done as part of its permitting system, and that may have been the last project, and I think it was a couple of years ago. And, and they probably identified some, you know, surveys done in terms of where the eelgrass population is, or, you know, the other natural features. I think the forage fish spawning areas are usually one of the ones that come up pretty often, because we're so close to the Skagit River Delta, that a large area of this is considered for forage fish for the salmon and stuff like that. So, they look at all that shading, you know, how much shade is in the water, and how much transparency and sunlight can we actually allow? So, I think all the data comes from some of the information that, that is fed by some of the state departments.
Any other questions, or? If not, I need a motion to continue this public hearing?
I make a motion that we continue the hearing until November the 28th.
I have a motion to continue the meeting until November 28th. You need a second? Second? If you have a second, all in favors? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? I have continued to the November 28th meeting. We'll move on to our next agenda item. It's a 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. It's a public meeting.
CAC Mac Senior Planner here again. As I just talked about the process and starting of the amendment process, the 2018 process is beginning since it's, it's October. And as I mentioned in my previous presentation, we have three of the elements that are still going to spill over into next year in terms of comp plan amendments, so we'll have the Park Recreation Plan, we'll continue to work on that, the Economic Development Element, and the Urban Growth Area Resizing. But one of the things that we wanted the Planning Commission to consider while we're considering the docket is the housing element. And as everybody is aware, that, that has been a big conversation in the community, and so we thought would be appropriate to try and bring a planning approach to it. And in that process, hopefully, we'll take a look at the buildable lands analysis, and, you know, the countywide planning policies, of course, are integral in that, because UGAs are the counties, case law, and the state, and everybody says that it's their line to draw in consultation with the cities. So, but housing is, isn't an important issue. We, as planners, attend planning conferences where planners from different cities around the state come together, and we also have different sections, Northwest Section, which is comprised of Watcom, Skagit, San Juan, and Island County, and that's a subset of the Washington chapter of planners. And we meet four times a year, just to kind of exchange ideas, and also hear from what's going on at the state level. And we had a Northwest Forum, Planners Forum, last week, actually, up at Bellingham, and there were several cities there, representatives of several cities, and, and one of the speakers generally was asking, so what is the main issues that, that everybody's dealing with? And everybody had housing on their, on their list. So, housing is not necessarily, you know, just an Oak Harbor or an Island County issue. It is a statewide issue that a lot of communities are taking on. It's not a simple answer. Everybody has the same challenges that we do, you know, how to provide affordable housing with the, with the restrictions and regulations that we have in place from the state, and, and so on. The state does a population projection, just like how OFM does projections for Island County and for Oak Harbor, and the state law says that we have to kind of use one of their ranges. They give a low, medium, and a high range for population projection, and we have to choose one of those populations for which we have to plan for. And that's kind of the process we used for the 2016 update. The county chose between the mid and the high, and they based it on certain trends, and there's a paper, actually, that Brad Johnson, the planner at that time, came up with the methodology on why Island County should do a little different population than what the OFM has produced, because of some of the birth rates associated with the south end of the island. Their demographics are different, there are less kids, and less kids going to their school, and therefore, the growth there is less than actually the north end of the island. So, there's some very distinct differences that were used in order to the population. Anyway, so the state does a population, low, medium, and high as well, and the high population says in 20 years, there's going to be 3.5 million people moving to Washington State, or at least that's going to be the increase. And 3.6 million out of that, if you really think about it, east of the Cascades, there's, you know, Spokane and the Tri-Cities of the big cities, but most of the population of the state is west of the Cascades. And so, most of the cities along there are faced with the same, what are we going to do for the next 20 years? How are we going to provide for that demand? And so, therefore, it is, it is a very challenge, challenging situation to deal with, and a lot of communities are doing that. And so, we also know from our recent discussion that that's an issue here. So, I think it'll be good to open up the housing element, have a discussion, look at it from a state, and the county, and a citywide. This is not just our problem to solve, it's a countywide issue. It grows across the borders, they have issues in the county as well. As Steve mentioned in the pre-meeting, we meet with them and chat with them, and we plan to do that every two months, and housing will definitely be one of the topics that we will discuss, and, and we have, we should be able to understand what the challenges are for the county population and them providing housing, and then how can Oak Harbor actually help in that entire process of accommodating that, that demand? So, I think it'll be good to have a good understanding of the housing issues that are statewide and countywide, and then citywide, and then how was, how can we best solve that problem in Oak Harbor? So, we'll have, you know, I think it's a good way to start discussing that topic, and also start looking at ways to maybe look at. And the one thing we have to understand is, we are planning for a 20-year horizon, not meeting just, you know, what's today's demand, because demands go up and down, and we have to meet that 20-year projection. So, there's a lot of things to learn from our side as planners as well, and we'll share that with the Planning Commission as we go through that process, and try to understand the challenges that other communities are facing, and how that can help us determine what the challenges are for us, and how to be best solved. So, we don't have, I don't have too much information to share, but that's kind of the general idea for trying to talk about the housing element and opening up the housing element as part of the 2018 update. So, that's something that we'll recommend coming forward with the preliminary docket. So, that's our suggestion. Do you have any questions?
The one question I got, since the last time that we did the population growth, and a lot was proposed that are expected to grow, how are we meeting that? Are we on track with it? Are we above it? Are we, are we below it?
Good question. I think we are on track with it. Our population growth is about 1% a year, approximately, and I think OFM's projecting, projections kind of are mirroring that. You know, they take into account a lot of things like migration and stuff when they're one year, because the census does, the federal census does their process every 10 years, right? And the state is trying to fill in the gaps for the middle, and they do it, they have several ways. They have, they, they can track, you know, records for birth certificates, death certificates, so they kind of know, you know, the birth rates and the, and the death rates, and they also know through driver's license registration or whatever, how many people are moving in and out of counties and cities and so on. So, they use kind of those kind of data to come up with that. But there's also some error rate in that, because they also use other assumptions, because they use a sample data set, and they kind of go back to that same data set for that 10-year period. So, it's tracking at 1%. I think our projection was 1% till, you know, the Navy told us about the squadrons that are coming between 2016 and 2019, and so we had that little up curve during that year, based on what, how many squadrons they said would be coming during that time. So, we're expected to see a minor spike in the next two or three years, and then, when they're, when they're done kind of expanding, then we anticipated going back to the 1%, which is normal, which has been historically the trend for the last 20 years. So, that's kind of what So that's kind of what our projections were going forward for the 20 years and the state's OFM is pretty close to, to those.
Thank you.
So when you were talking in the last, um, section about the, kind of the rough calendar for how you plan the docket and all these things, you mentioned that, um, the docket gets approved in March. So it's a 2018 docket, but it doesn't get approved until three months into the cycle. I know that when we talked about this last year, one of my concerns that I raised was that we push things so late into the whole cycle that we end up sometimes, at least my perception, hitting a roadblock where we, righterly or wrongly, feel pressured to make the decision without necessarily having all of the proper information. I felt very much that way with the critical areas ordinance where literally on the 28th of June, we're trying to pass something that is due out by the 30th of June. And it happened last year with the low impact development, um, rules that came right up until the end of December. So I guess what I'm trying to get to is I would really like to see us kind of try to slide the whole calendar left if possible, so that we don't find ourselves coming up to November, December and having a whole plate of stuff that either has to get passed for regulatory reasons or gets slid over into another year if it's not critical. But my biggest concern is, is the things that do have to get done. Um, not having time to, you know, sufficiently talk about them or, you know, for example, this year we have the capital improvements plan that has an element on it for transportation that wasn't on the transportation improvement plan. And it annoys me that we approved transportation improvement plan and then one month later something shows up on the capital improvement plan that wasn't on that. And I feel like part of it may be because we are jamming the schedule to the right instead of pulling it back to the left. And I realize you only got so many months in the year to work with and to start working on the 2018's schedule in April of 2017 may be pre, premature, but do you get where I'm coming at?
Um, yes, but I do have, um, the, the ones that you were talking about are regulations and not comp plan amendments. The critical area ordinance is part of the 2016 update because the critical areas were, from the state's perspective, it, it kind of follows the comp plan.
So is the docket only referring to the comp plan?
That is correct. And as far as comp plan amendments go, if, if you, I have the amendment on every meeting.
No, I
I mean, as a, as a topic for discussion. So we're talking about the amendments, long-range planning aspects of it. We're talking about something about it at every meeting.
Right.
It's the regulations. They, they come at different times. Regulations come at different times. We adopt them at different times. They don't have to follow this, this schedule. So this is for the comprehensive plan, long-range planning. So this is almost an ongoing discussion. So that's why we're not pushing the parks plan forward. You know, we do have our time schedule and if there are things that we need to discuss in terms of issues, we do take the time to, to discuss it. So as far as the amendment goes, no matter how you shift it, you'll somehow end up with the same time to work, whether before or after, because of all our notification and the choice to make the amendments at a certain time. Um, we overlap already with 2017 and 2018 amendments. We tried to not overlap it so much that we're still working on the previous year's amendments and you start to take on the next year's amendment. So we want to kind of dip in, you know, dip down from the previous year's amendments in terms of the work that's being done before you take off on the other one. So that's kind of why the schedule is the way it is.
Okay, I think I understand.
I'm sorry?
I think I understand. So those other things, the, the regulatory things that you're talking about, the state laws essentially is what most of them are?
Yes, they are requirements, like the critical area. So for, just to give you an idea, and I'll, I'll try to put a presentation together in terms of the GMA, there's a good presentation that we heard last week that I think the planning commission will benefit from. So the cities and counties that did not plan under GMA were still required to update the critical area ordinance. So they may not have the long-range planning requirements, they may not have to meet GMA, but they still had to do the critical area ordinance. So the state kind of tracks those two. So when they did the 2016 amendment, they said, you gotta do the comp plan amendments and the critical area ordinance because there are counties and cities that don't follow GMA, but they still have to do critical areas. So that was part of the comp plan, kind of time schedule, the 2016. And so that's why you saw the critical area ordinance, you know, we got a one-year extension because of the resources we were having to use in order to do that. And so that got pushed another year. And so now we're still getting another extension because we're still talking about it. So, um, that was, that's a unique anomaly, a regulation that kind of paralleled the comp plan amendments, but technically regulations have their own schedule moving forward. They don't
And we don't have any control over when those things come into us?
State, when the state says something, we try and, try and meet that. I mean, you know, because it's just funding related, it's a lot of other related, we try to, to, you know, that's, it's just a benefit for the city to be in time to have those adopted and we try our best to do that.
So I'd like to chime in if I could, please.
Sure.
On the, and I realize this is off topic a little bit, but, and maybe to give you some fuller information on your question and concern, you know, the LID project was at least a two-year project for staff. Um, and so I, I don't remember when you joined us on the planning commission, I'm sorry, Hal, but
It was February last year.
You know, um, it, we apologize, of course, if it felt rushed at the end, but it, it was a crescendo, crescendo. We, I mean, we were building to that, to that endpoint for the better part of two years. Uh, and there was a hard and fast deadline that we needed to meet from the state's perspective. Uh, and so our, our schedule was based trying to get that, to meet that deadline. Um, and then the, the critical areas code, I think CAC did a, a good job of, of explaining that. Um, our own internal problem on that was in terms of planners, the same planner who was, who was, was a big part of getting the LID code done, um, was also the one doing the critical areas code. Uh, and so where ordinarily I would have loved to have had half of 2016 to be devoting to the critical areas code, I wasn't able to do that because I had to spend that time, that planner's time on the LID because that's the one that had the first hard and fast state mandate. Um, but your point is well taken that, that, uh, and, and from time to time, I've had the same concern for the planning commission. Uh, you know, are we, are we able to give you the time that you really need on things? And so, but we do start this comp plan process every year in October. Uh, we, we seek your input on that. And I think our code is written in a fashion that says that the council has to adopt the docket by March, whatever that date is. Doesn't mean we have to wait that long. If we can get the things done before then, great. But if not, our, our code is set up so that our public has a surety in terms of what that process is going to look like. And that's why CAC put together the public participation program and the docketing process the way he did in the code. Because prior to that, we didn't have any of that codified. And, and so the schedule was sort of all over the place. And now at least we know that we have our own sort of miniature mandates that we've imposed on ourselves in order to keep us moving along. But it is, I think, probably one of the flaws in having an annual process, um, which is that it's, a, a year's not a lot of time, um, if we have more than just a couple items on the docket.
And, and, and in many years, the comp plan amendments that we're considering are is usually within, uh, the resources that we, you know, able to complete it with, with the resources that we have. You know, we have to look at how much resources we can allocate. But the process is written and the timelines are given so that you may have a year when you have a lot of things moving forward and you have to determine what you can and cannot accomplish. And those timelines will help commissions and city council determine what needs to move forward and what should wait for another time. So, um, even though we, it seems like we're, we're taking our time going through some of these, these amendments, these are years where we are predictably trying to come up with a work program to move certain things forward. But sometimes commissions and council will have to react to things like the, the Island County is trying to go through that. You know, they have so many requests on their comp plan and let, and limited resources. Not all of them can be done. And so you have to go through and you have to make determinations on each one on whether this is appropriate for this time or not, or can some things be done later? And those things may take time. Those things may need one or two meetings based on public input or other information that's needed. So there's a somewhat of a safety factor put in for those times when you actually would, may need them. But other times, as Steve mentioned, we try to get, it says before March 30th, the city council needs to adopt. We try to get it on that first city council meeting and not wait for the second council meeting or wait for the last date. But last year, we had some, um, some questions on, on what needed to be added to the docket. I think it was the UGA resizing one. And we actually flipped into, into April a little bit because we just didn't have enough information. So it's sometimes not always straightforward this, you know, we try to do things as soon as possible, um, but, um, there are times when, when that additional time may be necessary.
That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments? Um, the final item on our agenda tonight was the transportation, uh, concurrency. Uh, that item has been moved to the, uh, November 28th meeting. So our next, uh, regular, uh, business meeting is November 28th. Uh, if there's no other comments, I'll adjourn the meeting.